Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Independent City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, January 9th, 2018. Happy New Year to all. Let the record show that all the sitting councilors are here. And we all know that Councillor Hicks has resigned.
No.
Yes. Two weeks.
Surprise.
Everybody's awake. No, your wife did not call him. Excuse me for my misspeak. Folks, we have minutes of our special meeting. The work session. Councillor Hicks, I think you had a minor you wanted to point out.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that I was unfortunately absent.
You got that, Karen?
I have that correction. Thank you.
Great. Everybody else okay? All of the everybody signify by saying aye.
Well, you don't have a motion yet. You just said this to everybody else.
Oh, I am kind of like John Bolton.
I will approve the minutes as corrected.
I have a second. There we go. All the favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Visitor comment from Museum Open House, Vicki McCubbin. Good evening and welcome to City Council.
Hi, thank you. Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm here once again to talk about the museum. And over the winter break, the 30th of December, we held another open house. And we had close to 50 people in attendance and from as far away as Portland. And I was excited to find out that people had Googled other events. And we have been working really hard to up our game for advertising. There are people who hadn't yet seen the new military exhibit and came to see that. And we had a few goodies. And one really exciting thing, we had a gentleman and his grandchildren who grew up. He grew up in Independence, graduated from Independence High School in 1939. Sadly, while he was serving in the military, because his family is Japanese-American, he lost his property here. It was resold. But what a fascinating story and so nice of him to share. And hopefully, he's going to come back and maybe he's going to. He said if he could work it into his work schedule. He still works as an accountant, so 95 years old. So anyway, we had a wonderful time. And you're going to be receiving a save the date card because we have another event planned on the 24th of February. We have been working with the Independence Downtown Association to organize a birthday celebration for the incorporation of Independence from Hill and Thornton County, working on scavenger hunt and prizes and really working so that the museum can not only educate the community, but work with downtown businesses. So just wanted to update you and thank you for your time. And in a few minutes, hopefully, you're going to approve Aiden Christensen, who is an awesome girl. She's been with the Society of Women in the City, so I'll stop talking now. But thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And before she goes away, I wanted to tell you a story of how great it is to live in a small town. I stopped for something to eat at Independence Grill and I left my cellphone there. And she is going to go to the restaurant and bring it to me while the meeting is still going on.
Yay. Aaron Young, you had something.
I'm here. Yeah. I just wanted to come give a quick update on the progress. Projects like this sometimes seem like a duck sitting on a waterboard. A lot going on on the surface, but underneath the universe, there's a lot happening. We've met with four different designing teams and have narrowed that down to two. And we're working a lot with kind of site layout and parking and the nature of that a lot being on the slope and some difficulties we have to work through there. There were some small issues to work out before we were ready to sign a development agreement with the city. I'm happy to say that that's been resolved with the help of staff. And we got that signed yesterday. So that is signed. Well, they seem like just a little piece of paper to sew. You know how that is in the past. That's a big deal to us because it's a green light to look forward. And we have done a lot of work with meeting with different folks. We're looking at this project with a different set of eyes than we look at other projects outside the city because it isn't our city and it is our hometown. And so we're being very, very critical as to design elements and what it really means to the city for the long term. So you're going to see some activity going on. We're going to come up with some signage and things like that when we get some really good language. We're still trying to come up with a great name for the project. So we want to reach out to the community and maybe some of the schools to do that. So if you have any ideas with that, if you want to come up with a great name, you might see a little activity on the lot as far as elevations and just people stirring around a little bit, but we're excited to do that and show that there is some activity going on. And we're going to be proactive in doing that so people see activity going on and they don't just see something sitting. So I think that's it. I mean, we're working real hard. A lot of stuff's been happening and we're ready to be afloat. So thank you so much for your vote of approval and we'll take this enthusiasm and move it into other projects that we identify in town that we are excited to do as well. And we'll make that announcement when we're ready to download it. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Aaron. Appreciate it. Great. Anybody else have any other visitor comments made at this point? Okay, we're going to keep moving forward. The reports and presentations, I did the first part. Just a couple of pieces of information to let you know. The Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring the State of the City address. For myself and the Mayor of Monmouth, we'll be over at WOU on Wednesday night, the 7th of February. Also for your calendar, Senator Ron Wyden is holding his Polk County Town Hall on this Saturday at Western Oregon University. I can't remember if it's 1:30 or 2:30. Let me look and I'll get back to that. I've had the pleasure this last week, as a matter of fact, yesterday, I was invited to speak to the American Leadership Forum, representing rural communities in the valley along with a number of other people, talking about the urban-rural divide and where we have commonalities and where we have differences and what might be done to. The Senator Wyden's event is at 2:30 on Saturday at Western Oregon University. And this is the town hall he does in Polk County. Also had, I serve, the governor's appointed me, as you know, to the Regional Solutions Team, dealing with economic development in the region. And so we had meetings and proposals and lots of things going on last week. And also having the current chair of the Midland Valley Partnership Board. And we meet annually or semi-annually to help move economic development forward in the three-county area. The reason I mention that is just to let you know that while I may not have one of our internal commissions that I sit on here, I get to go other places and get to travel and do a little bit, you know, so that's just information. In your packet, you have committee and commission reappointments. And that's on, in your packet, you see a number of names. And does that look okay to everybody? Is someone making the motion?
I would move to appropriate appointment.
And reappointments?
Yeah.
Second.
A motion second. Okay, so we're reapproving everybody and appointing two. Yep. You're right. Thank you. Are we okay down here? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now, as I put my foot in my mouth at the beginning of the council, we do have a, Councillor Day did resign, so we now have a council vacancy. And the charter says council can fill that spot. In your, in front of you, we have, I asked Karen to pull up, an application for vacant council position. We've used this in previous years when there's, you know, we're not like right after the election. I'd like to suggest that this might be something we would like to use for people who would like to apply. There are typos in here from Gates and times meeting, but we'll get that cleaned up. But on the inside, it has people asking, we ask them, you know, their experience in elected, being an elected board, volunteering, community involvement, vision and things like that. Is this, do you folks think that this would, first I'm assuming that you would like to go with an application instead of just naming someone, but that's a council decision here, so preferences?
I do appreciate that. Having a little background.
Looks like that.
What's our, do we have a date to reply by?
No, no, that's something we haven't decided tonight. But is everybody okay with this? Is that okay? All right, everybody's okay with that? And we'll make, Karen and I will work together on making any, a couple of small items. When do we want, how long do we want to allow people to respond? Do we want two weeks? Do we want a month?
I guess first question, so we have the criteria that.
No. Other than the qualifications. Right.
Yeah, I have a timeline.
No, we have no time. We have no time. And this would be for a three-year appointment.
Well, three and a portion is.
Yeah.
I'd like to see this, at least the first round, back to us in 30 days.
I think 30 days is.
That sound okay? Yeah, I think so. Two weeks is sure. Yeah, I wanted to put it out there, but yeah. So like the first meeting in, so we would get back, okay, so we want to review that on the first week. This is February.
January.
Yeah, so we can do the first.
I have a question on that too. What's the delivery process for this notice?
We'll, through the, through the city, through people talking to folks, we can put it on our webs, you know, all our standard social media things. I'm sure the paper will pick it up.
Can we put it in our February water bills?
Is that, is there still time to do that? Good. Not a problem.
And as long as the water bills have gone out and people have had a chance to reply, then the first meeting in February should be okay.
Sound all right with everybody's meetings on the 13th? Yeah, that should give enough time.
That should be plenty of time. We'll usually hit first.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds good. And then we'll take a look and then here's what we're going to end up doing. We will take a look and see who it is and we'll just kind of, we have to chew on this and figure out who we're going to appoint.
If it's okay with council, can we give like a deadline of like say noon on the day of the council meeting or something, just so that we have a chance to put everything together and something.
I think that's great.
Makes sense to me. Everybody sound good? Did you have time?
To put everything together.
Do you want a day or two before the meeting?
Since I don't have any recommendations, all I could be doing is following.
Okay. And then so then we would, let's just talk a certain second because then we would get them in and then you folks are not going to have, on this thing, you would not have had a chance to read them yet. So we'll just get them and then we'll start reading them and then we'll, you know, probably later in February, we'll move on that. Does that sound? So we wouldn't necessarily make the decision on the third. Yeah, unless, because I'm going to guess that if you don't have the turn in until noonish, you know, or, you know.
Then probably a decision at the second meeting.
Yeah, we could, we could work to that or if we have to have, yeah.
And that's not an inordinate amount of time to go without.
No, I don't think so. I just want to make sure everybody's good with that. People happy? Okay, we're going to just move forward. Now, with Councillor Day leaving, one of the requirements for the MINET is that we have a council member to serve on the MINET Board of Correctors. And I think, I've talked to Councillor Hicks. He's willing, willing to serve. I think he'd do a good job. Do other, do other councilors think that that's okay?
That's where I was looking.
Actually, I was thinking Councillor Kepis because he has more history of MINET.
I would be interested, but I don't think I can make the meetings. That's a problem. Yeah, that's, that works stuff. But with the library, I'll sign it. So is, I don't have, if I do a consent of, consent of the council, is that okay?
I believe you might need a motion.
All right, will somebody do this so that, I believe we appoint Councillor Hicks to the MINET Board?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
No. And it's not because of you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
That's two times I voted against you for some reason.
Mr. City Manager, I think you have some things for us. Go ahead. The world famous phone. We live in the land of real here.
Mayor, Member of Council, thank you. So 2018 is going to promise to be one of our busiest years in commercial development possibly ever. It's going to be probably the beginning of a transformational period for the city. Not only, I think, you know, Eric was sort of downplaying, but a lot of that development, that commercial development down there is going to be a hugely significant piece of eye downtown and that was very, we went through a lot of negotiations, so that wasn't, there was no real delays. That was getting to, you know, where, the point where it was yes for everybody and we got there and really, really happy with the outcome. So that work will begin, you know, for the deadlines in the development agreement and we're really excited about seeing that happen. In the macro, we have UMP Working working on the Bee's Brewery. That's been working hard this past year. And as you recall, I has had some grant support through the Downtown Association, so we're excited to see that is going on. Independent Station, John from Independent Station LLC is behind me. That work should get started here very shortly. There is activity in, you know, behind those paper buildings downtown, there's a lot of work coming on in those buildings and they should be opening some of the businesses, hopefully, very soon this year, well before the summer. So it's a pretty exciting year and a very busy one. And very, again, I think it's going to be kind of a transformational beginning. This is not what I'm going to get done this year. Oh, yeah, not to mention the hotel, we received a site review application, formal application. That should be looking at, it can start probably end of February, beginning of March, in terms of the beginning of construction. So we will be looking at groundbreaking on that project. So huge year, a huge beginning to a new period, if you will, so.
You said you have the site review already?
Yes, site review.
Yay.
Application. So that was a nice big dig, pretty, you know, lots of pretty goals. So we're plugging for, we actually had a draft of that several weeks ago that we went through and did a preliminary review because of the changes to zoning code weren't in effect yet. So we actually gave the seat. Most of us before had a few comments, those been addressed, so we think this will go very smoothly and get out the door very quickly. So that's ongoing. Number of other things on my list for tonight. So we, the parts of downtown projects that we're working on, our own public work, those bid packages should be going out. I think we've just delayed that a little, a week or so, 15th, 25th? So January 25th, the bid package is going out of that. So the first meeting in February, we should have back to you the, the results and the handover for the unrecommended contractor for that work. And that's Mont Seven behind the Main Street Parkway, some waterline work, including a water line on D Street, Independent Station. And it's just, it's a pieces here and there. So it's a smaller package, but it was part of the overall plan for that work. And that will bring, that will bring to an end the public work that we're doing on this project, you know, for this phase. We also have, of course, coming up, the bid package.
Excuse me, is that Independence Station or Independence Landing?
Well, in this case, it's just downtown improvements. It's just downtown, so it's a downtown package of work. Most of that work will be on, it's now Osprey Landing, by the way. That's actually before the recorded name of the subdivision. So if you hear me calling Osprey Landing, that's, that's what we're doing. It came out, Independence Landing, but it's probably a more of a reference to the project itself. Osprey Landing is the whole 11-acre site. So try to distinguish that a little bit. Again, that's a subdivision, not recorded. So yeah, so that work is ongoing. When you, I think it's worth repeating what was said from the museum as well. On market encounters for January 16th through 23rd, the display on Vanport will be out here in the lobby. And if it's anything like the last display we had, never expected to be seen in Florida in the fall, so I'm excited. We've got a mic and we're excited to see that and hope the public gets in and sees that story. It's a fascinating story of a city that didn't last very long.
And could council please try to come to that city council meeting just a little bit early so we can get pictures with you in front of the Vanport display?
And I'll also add, I had a chance to visit at the Regional Solutions meeting with Senator Jackie Livers, our state senator. She was in Vanport that day. That was home. And when they say run for your life, that was what really happened because for those who may not know, the levees along the Columbia River in 1948 broke and 30 minutes of 30,000 person city was gone. It floated down in the river. And people literally, I mean, ran for their life. And Jackie had a coat and dressed. And that was what she, that was it. So anyway, it's an important part of working history. Excuse me for.
No, no. Thank you for adding the message. So I'm going to, a little bit of this, I'm going to read from it. This is American Department of Labor. So recruitment is going to go for the Rural Innovation Catalyst Position Partnership with SegCor to carry forward the smart innovation work. Lots of interest and very good pool of candidates. Hope to have somebody by the end of the month. So that was a grant supported effort. We're putting in another grant application and that's together, I believe, with Polk County for the Business Origins Rural Initiative.
No, this was just us and a bunch of other partners.
Okay. So we're going to get in the mix on this grant. I had a hard time following along with Sean any given day. So, and we're moving along with that one. Out in the hallway, you probably saw the smart meter display. You may have received a German home, smart meter notices, Pacific Power, Pacific Power Light. We are the first city that they have, are going to be starting in. So we have these large media blitz that's going to be going on in the fabric. And Sean's already lined up to speak with KATV.
KTW, R, K, A, T, U.
Actually, let's just do this yourself. Anyway, so we have Oldwood, they, it seems that PPL has a fairly significant media connection, media network going because they, we met with them a couple of days ago and we were talking about this and here we are and some of the stations are coming to Indy to talk about, you know, great things that we're doing here. So great opportunity for us to showcase our story and show it together with PPL, talking about the smart meter program, which will be really pretty interesting for the community as they get to understand what that's about. So a lot of literature will be added upon that. We are part of a state aviation, Department of Aviation, branch of the feds for the I-8 acronym, GUAS, basically our drones IP program. And that's a new acronym that the feds created. I didn't remember what it means, trying to, I'll tell you, but you don't need to know because you'll forget as well as I will. Anyway, we're in the mix. It's a new program with the feds, state put this up, said, you know, we'd be a good natural partner form, so we're in there on this one and, okay, you know, we're included as a potential testing location and site for business development of drone-related technology. So good stuff as far as the air department, air and air concern. Conceptual planning progress process for the Riverview Park is gearing up. Open House is scheduled a week from today, the 16th, from 4:30 to 7:00 PM for libraries, so that'd be a good one. This is for the main park improvements, the centerpiece of it all. So that'll be a fun project for all of us and looking for inputs and opportunities constraints. There'll be an open house, but that's the, that's the starting point. And then lots of tourism work going on, developing an uncorked Polk County park celebration with Polk County Tourism Alliance. So we're going to be uncorking stuff. I'm not quite sure what that one's about. I have to wear my corking face. So moving along, not such good news, but we're moving forward. We have, we did receive a resignation and we will begin recruitment for the community position, community engagement officer. So that position is turning over or has turned over and we will be recruiting pretty quickly on that one. The League of Cities has a new director. We've had, I've had the opportunity now to meet with that person twice. We had lunch today and we'll be seeing him again in about a month. The My Association, City Campus Association, Moore, which I'm a member of, is doing their quarterly meeting here in the event center in February. We will be showcasing the, we're doing a little bit of a documentary showing on the hotel project and the events landing for the managers there, talking about, you know, basically what is, you know, what's going on in urban renewal and our rural community. They're really interested in, in fact, they, Sean and the director have a chance to meet and we are going to work with them to help them put together a training program for economic development certification financially for different cities. So we will help, we're helping them get that kickstarted together with the association that Sean sits on, is a board member on as well. So it's, it's good stuff. It's good for the ladies, good for cities and certainly good for us to continue to have a presence in these kinds of activities. So you'll recall last meeting, we had a gentleman come up and with concerns about the rates. We said we would meet with that person. We did. We had myself, the budget director and the MINET's director and the public works director have his, had a call for an hour, going through questions and concerns they might have and attempting to address those. So I think he loved feeling that he certainly got attention, got a lot of answers. You know, people still, you know, examine your opinions, but I think he was pretty sure of what happened, the one-on-one or three-on-one, if you will, in this case. So we're both. We should be coming forward to you soon. I think we've reached finally an agreement in principle with WAVE, Astound, another cable pressure fiber provider, that will be looking to have a franchise agreement in the city. They don't really provide much in the way of direct service, but really some sort of conduit between here and there. So they really won't pose much in the way of competition to the local, you know, the incumbent providers, including MINET. But they do need a franchise agreement, otherwise they have to operate under our telecommunications ordinance. And people like to work under that. They prefer the franchise agreements to generally give a little more security. The Council of Governors has completed its hiring of the homeless coordinator. We are part of that agreement, part of that team that oversees that position and get some benefit from that. So that person may be underground networking. I'm not quite sure much of advanced those they have to give to their little, you know, departure those, they have to give to their last employer, but we were all very excited by the quality of it. One of the pool in particular is applicants, so it's pretty much an insurance person and she was excited to take the job. We, Sean and I will be taking a little trip here shortly. We're getting some interest from mineries in the area. We're going to go over to Mauna Wai, look at their particular setup. And I think they've seen it. They have a pretty neat incubation arrangement for mineries and startups. And there's probably a lot to be learned there and somebody who has a particular interest in the patents, perhaps their business located over there, at least their, their nascent business located over there. So we're going to visit with that person and some other mineries and just talk about Independence and our, you know, our relationship to the industry.
I'm really sorry. I'm really sorry you have that horrible duty.
Yeah, we've decided there will be no testing or sampling of product the entire time and you can trust that. Unless it's deemed necessary, I don't even pursue understanding the work. So a few more things that I've got from others. So leaf season pickup, public works pickup, and then on January 8th, if you have leaves left now, put in your bins. Don't wait for us, it'll be a long wait. The skater, is there a question coming? I don't have a question. Okay. Updated skating control system, so that's the, that's the controllers for our utilities, our water sewer systems that, this is a techs hole or, you know, don't spill it, cut it off, that kind of thing, lots of graphics, visuals and things. Anyway, for the water and sewers nearing its test front, the old system, new system we're in parallel for the next two weeks. We have a new system that we're, we're onboarding and replacing the old one with. We are continuing our work with the City of Monmouth on our joint wealth field project for pilot testing filters. Results will be submitted to the Drinking Water Authority in April and both departments will be working together to complete the pilot filter study. So we move forward on that. They had an agreement we aimed by a year ago, so that's going on, on this phase. We'll be talking about next phase, which will be a little bit bigger phase of development to get us to the point where we actually have water in its own. So, but at this point, we're just pilot testing the water and we'll have it from the well structure. That, that's a great project for two cities, add to all of our capacity and basically add another supply, you know, that you need to just get that safety redundant. Closing on our lift station bids, on February 14th, a lift station in the park behind the Catagou. We're doing a lot of work down there, both for our existing system and to support the landing project for the Osprey.
That day, that was home. And when they say run for your life, that was what really happened because for those who may not know, the levees along the Columbia River in 1948 broke. In thirty minutes, a thirty thousand person city was gone. It floated down in the river. And people literally, I mean, ran for their life. And Jackie had a coat and dressed. And that was what she did. So anyway, it's an important part of working history. Excuse me for going on.
No, no, thank you for adding the message. So I'm gonna read from it. This is American Department of Department. So recruitment's going to go for the Rural Innovation Catalyst Position Partnership with SegCor to carry forward the smart innovation work. Lots of interest and very good pool of candidates. Hope to have somebody by the end of the month. So that was a grand supported effort. We're putting in another grant application and that's together, I believe, with Polk County for the Business Organizing Rural Opportunity.
No, this one's just us and a bunch of other partners.
Okay, so we're gonna get in the mix on this grant. I had a hard time following along with Sean any given day. So, and we're moving along with that one. Out in the hallway, you probably saw the smart meter display. You may have received a German hole. Smart meter notices Pacific Power, Pacific Power line. We are the first city that they have, are going to be starting in. So we have this large media blitz that's been going on. In fact, Sean's already lined up to speak with KATV.
KTW, R, K, A, T, U.
Actually, let's just do this yourself. Anyway, so we have Oldwood. They, it seems that PPL has a fairly significant media connection, media network going. Because they, we met with them a couple of days ago and we were talking about this. And here we are, and some of the stations are coming to Indy to talk about, you know, great things that we're doing here. So great opportunity for us to showcase our story together with PPL, talking about the smart meter program, which will be really pretty interesting for Indy as they get to understand what that's about. So a lot of literature will be out and about on that. We are part of a state aviation, aviation branch of the feds for the, I hate acronyms, UAS, basically drones, IPP program. And that's a new acronym that the feds created. And I didn't remember when it means trying to, I'll tell you. But you don't need to know because you'll forget as well as I will. Anyway, we're in the mix. It's a new program with the feds, state put us up, said, you know, we'd be a good natural partner for, so we're in there on this one. And okay, you know, we're included as a potential testing location and site for business development of drone-related technology. So good stuff as far as the air department, air and air concerned. Consensual planning process for the Riverview Park is gearing up. Open house is scheduled a week from today, the sixteenth, from four thirty to seven PM for libraries, so that'd be a good one. This is for the main park improvements, the centerpiece of it all. So that'll be a fun project for all of us and looking for inputs and opportunities constraints. There'll be an open house, but that's the starting point. And then lots of tourism work going on, developing an un-cored Polk County park celebration with Polk County Tourism Alliance. So we're gonna be un-corking stuff. I'm not quite sure what that one's about. I have to wear my corking face. So moving along, not such good news, but we're moving forward. We have, we did receive a resignation and we will begin recruitment for the community, the position of community engagement officer. So that position is turning over or has turned over and we will be recruiting pretty quickly on that one. The League of Cities has a new director. We've had, I've had the opportunity now to meet with that person twice. We had lunch today. And we see him again in about a month. The, my association, the Kansas Association, Moore, which I'm a member of, is doing their quarterly meeting here in the event center in February. We will be showcasing the, we're doing a little bit of a documentary showing on the hotel project and events landing. The four managers there are talking about, you know, basically what is, you know, what's going on urban renewal in a rural community. They're really interested in, in fact, they, Sean and the director have a chance to meet and we are going to work with them to help them put together a training program for economic development certification financially for different cities. So we will help, we're helping them get that kickstarted together with the association that Sean sits on, is a board member on as well. So it's, it's good stuff. It's good for the ladies, good for cities, and certainly good for us to continue to have a presence in these kinds of activities. So you'll recall last meeting, we had a gentleman come up and with concerns about the rates. We said we would meet with that person. We did. We had myself, the budget director and the, my name's director and the public works director have his, had a call for an hour going through questions and concerns they might have and attempting to address those. So I think he loved feeling that he certainly got attention, got a lot of answers. People still, you know, examine their opinions, but I think he was pretty sure of having the one-on-one or three-on-one if he will in this case. So we're both. We should be coming forward to you soon. I think we've reached finally an agreement in principle with WAVE, Astound, another cable pressure fiber provider, that will be looking to have a franchise agreement in the city. They don't really provide much of the way of direct service. We're really sort of a conduit between here and there. So they really won't pose much of the way of competition to the local, you know, the company providers, including mine. But they do need a franchise agreement, otherwise they have to operate under our telecommunications ordinance. And people like to work under that. They prefer the franchise agreements to generally give a little more security. Council of Governors has completed its hiring of the homeless coordinator. We are part of that agreement, part of that team that oversees that position and get some benefit from that. So that person may be underground networking. I'm not quite sure much advanced those they have to give to their departure, those they have to give to their last employer. But we were all very excited by the quality of it. One of the pool in particular is applicants. So it's pretty much an insurance person and she was excited to take the job. We, Sean and I will be taking a trip here shortly. We're getting some interest from mineries in the area. We're gonna go over to Mauna Wan, look at their particular setup. And I think they've seen it. They have a pretty neat incubation arrangement for mineries and startups. And there's probably a lot to be learned there. And somebody who has a particular interest in the feds has their business located over there, at least their nascent business located over there. So we're gonna visit with that person and some other mineries and just talk about independence in our, you know, our relationship to the industry.
I'm really sorry, I'm really sorry you have that horrible duty.
Yeah, we've decided there'll be no testing or sampling of product the entire time. You can trust that. Unless it's deemed necessary, only in pursuit of understanding the work. So a few more things that I've got from others. So leaf season pickup, public works pickup. And then on January eighth, if you have leaves left now, put in your bins. Don't wait for us, it'll be a long wait. The skater, is there a question coming? I sometimes have a question, okay. Updated skating control system, so that's the controllers for our utilities, our water sewer systems that says it takes full or don't spill and cut it off, that kind of thing. Lots of graphics, visuals and things. Anyway, for the water and sewers nearing its test front, the old system, new system we're in parallel for the next two weeks. We have a new system that we're onboarding and replacing the old one with. We are continuing our work with the City of Monmouth on our joint wealth field project for pilot testing filters. Results will be submitted to the drinking water authority in April and both departments will be working together to complete the pilot filter study. So we move forward on that. They had an agreement we aimed by a year ago. And so that's going on, on this phase. We'll be talking about next phase, which will be a little bit bigger phase to get us to the point where we actually have water in its own. So, but at this point, we're just pilot testing the water and we'll have it from the wells structure. That's a great project for the two cities and to all of our capacity and basically add another supply, you know, that you need to just get that safety redundant. Closing on our lift station bids, on February fourteenth, a lift station in the park behind the Cattico, we're doing a lot of work down there, both for our existing system and to support the landing project, the Oscar landing project. So that work will be, that's part of the five point nine million dollars that you approved earlier. And so that's going to be one of the early out projects that we're working on right away. It's the largest, our thirteen-way water lift station in the city, just for your heads up. It's the one that was largely responsible for flooding our basement back in two thousand twelve. I've looked back on that one fun. Let's see. The, I already got that one. Oh, we are, for those of you who remember us talking year after year about reader boards, we have actually, we have got that project running. We are working with a science company. We have installation location outside the library. And so that will get, that work will be contracted out here shortly, presuming that we're still a little bit budget. That one is moving forward. We've been wanting to get a reader board for the city for some time. So it'll be, it'll be two-facing. You want to deal with the traffic both coming and going, you can see it. It'll be supported by both the library and city hall. So a lot, a lot of messaging possibilities there. Let people know about our meetings, let people know about the signing phase of whatever.
Is there a completion date estimate on that?
I think the plan completion would be within the next ninety days. So you're supposed to err on the far side. Plan completion.
Okay, so ninety-one minutes.
That would be the, that would be the ambition.
This is great. Anything else?
No, I think we're good. It's okay. Thank you.
I think, Miss Gloria. Do you want to use the budget calendar?
Yeah. For now. You're gonna make Gloria the budget officer and we'll end up now on that process. So you have before you the staff report. And what we're looking for is two things, approving the budget calendar and approving the designation of Gloria Finance Director as the budget officer again this year. And she did a great job last year. So I don't want to jump back.
Are we, do we have a full budget committee at this time?
I believe, well, yeah, a counselor, so that will.
That's actually completed.
I believe that we have a full slate of budget officers.
Well, let's come back on that one. We definitely need to know that.
We'll have to get back to you on that one.
Well, since this is fairly pro forma, I move to adopt the two thousand eighteen nineteen budget calendar as presented and to appoint Gloria Butch Finance Director as the budget officer.
Motion, seconds. Are we okay? Discussion, one favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now opposed, motion carried. So, okay. We have, now we're going to renew business. I have, we have a public hearing on the closeout of Merritt. And I have to open the public hearing. And hearing gets to read a statement.
Yes. The City of Independence received a two thousand sixteen community development block grant from the Oregon Business Development Department, Infrastructure Finance Authority, for a regional Marion and Hulk micro enterprise project. Citizen participation is required by section one oh four A two of the Housing and Community Development Act and by federal regulation at twenty-four CFR part five seventy point four eighty-six, which requires each applicant, in this case, the City of Independence, to provide evidence and certify completion of a seven-element citizen participation plan. The applicant must provide for a minimum of two public hearings, each at different stages of the project, for obtaining citizen views and responding to proposals and questions. The hearings must cover community development and housing needs, development of proposed activities, and review of program performance. Prior to closeout of a project, the city must hold a second hearing in order to review the results of the project with citizens and to take comments about the recipient's performance as part of the grand closeout process. The purpose of this public hearing is for the city council to obtain citizen views and to respond to questions and comments about the project. Notice that this hearing has been published and proposed in accordance with local practice and the requirements of the CDPG citizen participation guidelines.
Thank you, appreciate that. Representatives for Merritt, I invite you to come and enlighten us. Good evening and welcome to City Council.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name's Elaine and I'm a program coordinator at Merritt. So you all have a friend view of our report, so I'm not gonna read it to you, but I'm just gonna touch on some highlights. You all have it, see if I can. Oh, sorry. You won't be getting it.
That's why. I didn't think I'd miss it. Don't worry, it's gonna be my first course today. Thank you so much.
So with this period, we offered ten business started classes in three locations, Independence, Woodburne, and Salem. And those are all focusing on rural entrepreneurs. You guys have a friend of you who make up of the clients. And twenty-two of them are from rural Marion County and only four from Polk. We did offer a class here in Independence, but just, there wasn't as much interest. But rural Marion County classes are growing, there's a high demand for them. Seems like they tend to have more, they fill up faster than our, than our city classes inside of Salem. On the backside, there's just kind of a sampling of the different kinds of businesses that have come. All of them have actually started up, which is part of what we do, helping people decide if that's actually the great, the best direction for them. So we still consider that a success if someone has come and kind of looked at some basic feasibility and decided that that is not the best option for them because it has saved them a lot of finances and grief in many different ways. So of those, there are seven who are currently in business and are generating revenue, nine that are working on it. So that can be many different stages that they are in. And ten are still thinking about it formally though, because they are still in our network and they are still asking questions and they're still working with us. This is the second year that we've opened up this grant to the rural community and it's just grown, gaining momentum. So, thank you.
Of the seven and the nine businesses, the seven who are in business and generating and the nine who have started and are working, are there any in Polk County of those seven and nine?
Yes. One of our rock stars is Triffa Bodice and she has a in-home childcare center. And she came to us looking for help to expand her in-home childcare. At the time, she was just doing childcare and she wanted to expand, really do more of education focused and preschool. So through our classes and our IDA, are you all familiar with an IDA, Individual Development Account? Yes? Okay. So with that resource, she was able to fully recondition her garage and make it into an actual preschool classroom. She is also working with preschool promise and CCRNR, getting really formalized with Spark. I'm not sure you're all familiar with that. I don't know too much about it, but it's kind of a more formalized certification process for in-home childcare providers to, to offer actual preschool. So more academic-based childcare rather than just babysitting. So she has been working through certification with that and she has now, she is, I think, at the fifth level, which is the highest level of certification through Spark, and has her garage fully reconditioned into an actual classroom and is doing very well. So.
Additional questions from the speaker? It's nice that we're able to be part of, you know, growing business.
Yes, thank you so much for your support.
Is there no questions for the speaker? Thank you very much. There's an opportunity for public comment. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to comment on the closeout of the Merritt, the Merritt brand? I don't see anybody rushing to the microphone. Okay, Ms. Karen, have we completed the requirement?
Yes, you have.
Okay, without objection, we're closing here. Is that okay with everybody? Okay? Very much.
We can finish business.
I didn't have a listen. Okay, go ahead. I'm gonna go backwards for a moment.
The city manager mentioned talking with the people who were at our last meeting, comments concerns about where the money and the water bills were spent and where it went to. And I have some concerns based on two documents that were recently made public. The first is the Independent that is published by Tremart, I believe that's the way it's pronounced. And in it, it quotes that about fourteen dollars and fifty cents goes to pay the debt for Minnet, a broadband company co-founded with the City of Monmouth. And about six fifty of the average bill, this is a utility bill we're talking about, goes to pay the debt on the Independent Civic Center. And this information was garnered from Steve Donovan, who is the city's contracted utility expert. And in the January water bill, there was an insert about what does your utility bill go for? And underwater, it shows six dollars and thirty-seven cents to Minnet, which is less than half of what was quoted by the city contracted utility expert. And it shows nothing for Independent Civic Center, although six dollars and fifty cents was quoted by our contracted utility expert as going towards the Civic Center in the utility bills. I would very much like to have an accurate statement of how much in each utility bill goes towards paying for Minnet debt and how much goes towards paying for the Independent Civic Center. And even if that is diverted through the Urban Renewal Fund, it is still money going towards paying those two bills, which we did see both of those bills outlined in last year's budget. I am at a loss to understand why there's such a disparity on the two amounts that are quoted.
We will get a written response back to on all of that. Do you have a copy of what you just read from?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate that.
Will that written response be by the next meeting?
I think so, yes.
Thank you. And I'd really like it to be clearly indicated how much is owed on each of those two debt services and why there is a disparity in the amounts that were shown. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Anything else under unfinished? Okay, we're gonna keep, before we go into a executive session for the purpose of real property transaction, we have, we saw a little bit of this a while back. And does somebody want to do an introduction of what this is, we're looking, to be looking at?
I can take care of that. So, yeah, we, in the spring of last year, we decided, we're doing the branding campaign. We also wanted to really, with the eclipse coming, we knew we were gonna be doing some of our events, so we wanted to film a lot of it and create a video to try to really kind of portray in the community that we believe, you know, we see it as a real vibrant, active place. So we ended up with this, this video, which is really kind of, it's heavily focused on the summer events, but we think it also really gives a good feel for the community itself. gives a good feel for the community itself.
I love those records.
That is beautiful.
It is.
It's very fun to look for that.
No, we're just yet. We're, yeah, we've got a couple of last little big tweaks we want to make to before we're making it public.
And, and Travel Salem has just re, re, released three new videos also, and one of them has some play especially concerning hop and vines in this area.
Great. Okay, yes, sir. One thing I should add to my report, February twelfth, Lincoln's birthday, we are doing our Lincoln reenactment at Maxine's Ballroom. So it's a free event sponsored by, sponsored by the city. We're gonna do the high school, last minute, they're, they're, they had their own performance seats for the stage, so we, that was the best available second choice, so, first come for sure. For anybody who has- Birthday cake, we'll be there also for the president. Thank you. For those of you, this person who did this Lincoln reenactment presented at the Lincoln Oregon Cities, it was really good, it's the one I happened to see, it has a couple of different gigs, but it was a press conference from Lincoln's perspective related to civil war. It's very believable. Now, I've never met, I'm old, I've never met Lincoln, but, although my son would say Dan, but it is, it'd be well worth, well worth the time. We're gonna go into the executive session portion, city council will now meet executive session for purpose of negotiating real property transactions pursuant to ORS funding to six six oh two E, the representative news media designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. Representatives of news media specifically directed not to report any deliberations during the executive session except the stated general subject of the session previously announced, though the citizens will be made in executive session this time, the council will turn to conference room for the third, there are duration of the executive session, once the executive session has adjourned, we will return to open session in the council chamber. Any decision from the executive session will be deliberated at that time. Everybody, yes, sir? I don't expect this this afterwards, and I don't know if you want to believe council comments or not. Thank you, thank you. Our, there are council comments, since I don't anticipate, we, we'll, what we'll do is we'll, we'll come back, we don't have anything else, we'll just adjourn, that's what we'll do. Does anybody have announcements?
I'm sick of one.
Okay.
Valves are out, yep, I mean.
There you go. What was that again?
Valves are out, be sure, yep, I mean.
That's good, all right. Council, let's take about five minutes to get to the conference room, and then when we come back, we'll just, we probably will just adjourn. Okay, break the executive session.